Just the.
I did that, though.
Channel's coming in.
You saw no one here and you turned around.
We're here.
Oh, yeah. I am waiting until Apple tells me that seven thirty.
We got a green light.
The clock is wrong. This is easier to do it from. Oh, there we go. Good evening. I am going to call the meeting to order. The time is seven thirty. This is the regular council meeting for July twenty second. Clerk, can you please do a roll call?
Mayor Protemblis.
I'm here.
Councilman Fleming.
Here.
Councilman Mier.
Here.
Councilor Rorbeck.
Here.
Councilman Soltis.
Here.
Councilor Wright.
Here.
Mayor Gravsky.
I am here, thank you. The invocation and pledge this evening will be led by Councilman Fleming. I invite you to stand if you would like.
Dear Heavenly One, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion and give us clear minds, peaceful hearts, and allow us to do the best of our ability to work for the well-being of our great community. Amen.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. First up this evening, we have approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions this evening? All right, seeing none, we're going to move to meeting open to the public. This is the opportunity for the public to speak. I ask that anyone who wishes to speak addresses me and keep it to three minutes, give your name or anything else identifying. And with that, meeting is open to the public.
Jim Capizo, eight six three Illinois. Our waste garbage wasn't picked up again. I just want to mention that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Capizo. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? All right, seeing no one, I'm going to close meeting to the public and move to the consent agenda. We have Fire Chief Resolution two thousand twenty-four Emergency Operations Support Plan from the Fire Chief, the resolution to adopt the two thousand twenty-three Oakland County Multi- Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan, Director of Public Services Scheduled Replacement of Vehicle Number four eight five, from the City Manager and Environmental Citizens Committee, the Master Sustainability Plan, from the City Manager, the Michigan Employees Retirement Systems Delegates and Alternates to the Annual Meeting, and then the City Council Special Meeting Minutes from July eighth and the regular council meetings from July eighth. Can I please get a motion to approve?
Your Honor.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I will support.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those again say no. All right, motion carries. It all passes. And then we have communications from the City Manager, the Michigan Municipal League Annual Convention Delegate and Alternate.
Each year, the City Council selects one delegate and one alternate to represent the city at the Michigan Municipal League's annual meeting from those council members who will be attending. This year's annual convention is September eleventh through the thirteenth. Staff recommends that City Council approve that Councilor Rorbeck as the delegate and Councilor Wright as the alternate for the two thousand twenty-four annual convention.
All right, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve?
Your Honor.
Yes. Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
All support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those again say no. Motion carries. And then we have reports from the City Manager. It's a request to transfer funds from the Community Advisory Board to the Madison Heights Community Foundation.
With the expansion of the donations to the Community Advisory Board, also known as the CAB, the current board's interest in investing funds for the long-term planning, staff has worked with legal counsel to establish a nonprofit Madison Heights Community Foundation. The board members of this foundation are comprised of the same members of the CAB with the addition of the Deputy City Manager, City Clerk. Therefore, we are seeking council approval to move the CAB funding from a city escrow account to the Madison Heights Community Foundation account, which will operate as a separate entity from the city. The current cash balance is approximately one hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars with about fifty thousand dollars in outstanding accounts receivables. Staff recommends that City Council approve this balance transfer from the Community Advisory Board escrow to the Madison Heights Community Foundation. And just to clarify, this is where the twenty-five thousand dollars a year from the marijuana companies go into.
All right, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve from council, please?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move that City Council concurs with the recommendation, recommendation of staff to balance transfer the one hundred and ninety-three thousand from the Community Advisory Board to the Madison Heights Community Foundation.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. And I just want to clarify, the fifty thousand in outstanding would also be moving over as well.
Yes.
All right. Is there any other discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I just want to ask the question for the public's sake. Right now, it's in a city escrow fund where the city has some control over it. How would we maintain control? I assume that we have a majority of seats on the new board?
No. So the, we don't have the majority of seats on the CAB either. Currently, the CAB, so the money's donated to the city with restrictions tied to it. So it's not city money. It's set up for, to donate to grants or city projects or things like Trail Tunes. And the board currently is myself kind of leading the chair, our finance director, and then a member from each one of the marijuana companies, which currently was three. It's been expanded to five, so we would still be following that same rationale, only the bylaws of this nonprofit, the city manager, whoever that is, so it doesn't name me, it would go on to whoever, as long as the foundation is established, is the chairperson or the main authority for this foundation. The next two board members are the City Clerk, who is currently the secretary, and the finance director, who would serve as the treasurer. And then there are currently four, five seats, well, it could be four because there could be a change, of the marijuana companies. So there would be four seats open to them to appoint one person, and then we have two residents. So when the CAB first was established, City Council appointed those two residents, but it wasn't like a board. They don't expire, and it's the same two residents. Currently, Josh Champagne and Chelsea Smallish still serve on that and expressed interest in being appointed to the foundation. So the initial foundation founding members are myself, Linda Coonath, and Cheryl Amrotman. And so we had our first meeting approve the bylaws. We've already turned in the letter of incorporation, and then we appointed the first round of members. So we appointed a representative from Liberty, a representative from Quality Roots, and those two residents. So we currently have seven. So the city traditionally has been in charge of taking the grants. The records would be stored at the city, and the city kind of controls it from a paperwork standpoint.
Okay. And, Your Honor, for me, just to clarify for the residents, every dollar in there needs to be spent on projects within the city of Madison Heights, not necessarily the city of Madison Heights, but within the city. So it could be community groups, schools, things like that, that are in the boundaries of our city?
Yes. I want to start clarifying, not schools.
Well, the board, the CAB itself, put a rule on itself that we would not use marijuana funds to directly impact anything to do with children. So a great example of that's like the Arts Board puts on a pumpkin walk, which traditionally is marketed towards kids and it hands out candy to kids. The CAB refused to fund that. But they do fund things like backstops for play, you know, equipment in the parks. They funded part of the fitness court. They funded Trail Tunes, Juneteenth. They've done that, I think, every year since those two have been going on. They funded different things within the parks. So there is money for that. There recently, so only in about the past year, we've started to accumulate a fund balance, a cash balance, actually, in this scenario. And so the board has expressed interest in investing that for a bigger type project. So as you can tell, we have about one hundred and ninety-three thousand, probably already fifty to sixty of that's allocated or promised to people already, and we reimburse it. So it's not, we don't hand people a check. They have to prove they did what they were supposed to. And so the thought is that this foundation will come up with something that they're looking to do within the community. So it has to take place within the city of Madison Heights. So if we get a grant application for somebody wanting to do something in Warren, and they're not even from Madison Heights, it's rejected out of the gate.
Thank you. And, Your Honor, just one last question. Changing the bylaws would require a supermajority, which if we have three members from our city staff, that would effectively block it?
Well, the minimum number of board members is seven on this new foundation. So they could change it in the future if they so chose to.
Any other questions or comments? All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those again say no. Motion carries. And with that, I invite closing comments. Councilman Mier.
Thank you, Your Honor. So a couple of things. With training, I agree with Mayor Protemblis that McNaw is kind of a pricey situation. As I mentioned last meeting, I'm a firm believer in education and learning, how I'm supposed to be doing this job and picking up pointers and meeting new contacts. And on the school board, I think I mentioned a while ago that I achieved Level Four, and what that means is I attended twenty-four classes, which are four hours apiece, and three hundred and eighty, three hundred and sixty-eight were required. I have three hundred and eighty hours of additional meetings, like law symposiums, current bills that are going on, stuff like that. And with pertaining to the school board, I get a lot of that same stuff from the MML. I've been to a couple of meetings so far with them. I don't know if City Manager Marsh likes that or not, because after the last one, I spent about two or three hours in her office with a bunch of questions that I came back with from going to the training. So I think she's glad that I went, but maybe not. So I am a firm believer in that. And with that all said, I considered the conference this year. It is part of the certification for MML. So I will be attending. However, I'm going to stay in McNaw City, and I am going to pay for my own lodging. So the only taxpayer dollars are going to be for the boat ride back and forth in the actual conference, which is about six hundred dollars. And I appreciate that from the taxpayers. And if they feel that's not what they want from their council, then please reach out to me. But again, I'm a pretty firm believer that I want to keep up on current events and stuff that's going on and keep learning. So. We wrapped up our baseball season last week. Quite an exciting game. Councilor Wright was able to come out and cheer his team on. They got out to an early lead against Sherman and Sherman, and then held on to win seven to six. So had tying and winning runs on second and third in the bottom of the last inning. So it was a pretty exciting game. Sean's team, Councilman Fleming's team, went on to win the World Series. They lost the first game and then came back to win the next two. So that was pretty exciting. They lost the first game by a run and then mercied the next two games. So. And in our other division, the team sponsored by the Fire Department and the Police Department finished in third and fourth place. So the actual team that won that was sponsored by Judge Brian Hartwell. So great end to that season. And I think that's it for tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Protemblis?
Yes, Your Honor. First off, I want to discuss, I've gotten several messages on customer service issues as it relates to priority waste. Residents have been reaching out that they've called the number, they've been sitting on hold for ten upwards of twenty minutes. And, yeah, I know the representative said that that was going to be the primary method of communication. But I, if they're not going to staff that line, then there might be some issues. And it's anecdotal. It's only a half dozen or so residents who sent me messages over the last week or so. So anecdotal in nature, but it's something that we need to monitor, them being a new vendor for the city and all. Secondly, I want to remind everybody, there's an election coming up in a couple of weeks. And I know our deputy city manager is going to talk from the clerk's office to remind you not to spoil your ballot. Pick the one side. It's a primary, so you don't spoil your ballot. But I would just want to remind everybody that elections is so vital to our country. What we have no place for is any type of violence. We can agree to disagree. We can have differences of opinion. But I just, I just want to echo a sentiment that, you know, this country was founded on the idea of having freedom of speech, having different representation. And I think, as we've seen a barrage of historic events coming at us since even well before the pandemic, I think maybe that gets lost in the shuffle a little bit. And so I just encourage people to, you know, be kind to their neighbors. If they have a sign that's different than yours, be kind. If you meet a candidate you don't support, be kind. I think that it's important that we hold up the notion of our founding fathers having that type of respectful disagreement. And I'd encourage those in higher offices, and most have spoken out in similar ways, but I'd encourage folks to practice what they preach and their rhetoric as well. I think that we should be talking about issues. We should not be talking about people's character. And that, to me, is an important distinction. Lastly, I want to talk about Trail Tunes. I'm wearing the shirt today because we officially launched the event page for Trail Tunes, our fifth annual now, if you can believe it. We started this thing in the pandemic. When everything was shut down, musicians couldn't play anywhere, and we found every loophole in the stay-at-home orders we could possibly find to be able to host that music festival and bring bands directly to the people. You know, it was outdoors, it was spaced out. And we've held that theme throughout the entirety of the festival's history, you know, that it's about the music and it's about directly connecting with local musicians. And last year, we added the Battle of the Bands component. And this year, what I'm excited about is it's going to be the same day as our ribbon-cutting for the new band show. And so we will kick off Trail Tunes with, I promise, not too many speeches, you know, we're going to limit that. It's going to be very narrow. And then a, the kickoff will happen with our headliner, our last year's winner of our Battle of the Bands at Trail Tunes, The Aspersions. They're a classic rock band, and they promise that they will raise the roof on the festival right after we do the ribbon-cutting for the band show. And so it'll be a nice, fun time. I encourage everybody to plan to come out. It is September twenty-first. Starts at 2:00 PM. That'll be when we do the ribbon-cutting, and it will end around 7:00 PM or so at night. All, as is normal, it's going to be in Civic Center Park. And if you want to be a vendor, if you want to play as a musician there, if you want to, you know, if you're a part of a group and you want to participate in the festival in some way, we'd love to have you. We'd love to have you with us in participating. As I mentioned, this festival started in the pandemic. It started with a bunch of neighbors coming together and bringing music into the city. And that is the heart and soul of the festival. And so if you want to be a part of that, we encourage you to join us. That's it, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Councilor Wright?
Thank you, Your Honor. The only thing I wanted to add to that is we're going to keep September rocking. The week prior to Trail Tunes, we are having Reven in the Heights, and I just wanted to invite our residents to sign up. Bring out your classic cars. Bring out your love for food. It's going to be a fantastic event hosted by the Human Relations and Equity Commission. You know, we always talk about different cultures and different communities. We're in the Motor City, so it makes sense for us to do a car event. We're excited. We've partnered with a couple of organizations within the city, including Joyful Jungle, Early Childhood Learning Center. We've also partnered with the Fire Department, who's going to have that open house that day. So it's going to be pretty exciting and continues to grow. So for our car buffs and for our cooking buffs, you kind of wonder what you get besides, you know, coming out and getting the show off your ride. We're going to have some pretty cool hardware. So we won't have live bands, but we will have a DJ, and we do have a Mayor's Choice Award, as well as a Fire Chief and Police Chief. So it should be a good time, a good time for community. This is an event free to the public, as I know Trail Tunes is as well. So it's going to be from ten to three. And right now, I'm just going to call all of the folks who've always wanted to compete in a barbecue competition. I got in contact with the folks from the Great Lakes Barbecue Society today, which is, it's a thing. It's a thing. And let them know that we're going to have a competition. So there's a lot of folks excited. So you need a team name and to, you can go to the Human Relations and Equity Commission's Facebook page to find out more detail. So. And I do want to echo Mayor Protem's sentiment about civility, diplomacy, and just remembering to be kind. Like, you know, we just keep going through historical times. Like, it seems like every other month, something happens that, like, I feel like we studied in a history book over centuries. And it's like, it's crazy. But, I mean, I think the human spirit, like, perseveres, and we do have to remember, like, to be kind and to remember that people, that we're all human, and that that person that you disagree with is human, too. So let's try and remember that humility in them, so we can have people remember it in us. So be kind. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Sherman, anything this evening?
Just one comment, Your Honor. I want to publicly congratulate Councilor Wright's ace in defeating the Sherman and Sherman Rockies in the thriller, eight to seven. We had our chances in the bottom of the last inning, as Councilman Mier mentioned, and we just fell a little short. But congrats to you and your team. And congrats to Councilman Fleming's team that won the World Series against the city of Clausen. So kudos there. Councilor Wright's team won the city championship, but they're both great accomplishments. And that's it, Your Honor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Marsh, anything?
I have three events that I'm excited about, none of which involve the election. So the first one is July the twenty-ninth. That is next Monday. Staff has been putting together a virtual community conversation to talk to our residents about the happenings of Rosie Park and different activities that we have been doing, different things that we're going to be trying, and moving that forward because staff and council hears you, and we would like to have this community conversation. So it will be virtually to allow more people to attend, and hopefully we'll get a good turnout for that. The next thing is August the fifth. We're having the Design Open House at Ambassador Park from four to seven. A lot of people have asked me where Ambassador Park is located. So it's on six hundred East Thirteen Mile, sort of between the golf course and the location of the Nature Center. So if you go to the Nature Center, you've gone too far. August the sixth, we're having an Education Day. That's going to be held at Lexington Village Clubhouse. It's not just for Lexington Village residents. It's for anybody in our city. It is to tell people about different educational opportunities. If you have moved here from a different country and maybe English is your second language, there will be services for you there as well. If people have certifications from different countries, there will be sources there as well to help you translate those to useful skills in Michigan. So a lot of resources. We've partnered with Oakland County and Oakland eighty with that, and they have done a fantastic job. I'm really excited, and we're hopeful to have a good turnout. So we're also offering free food. And the hours are two to six. And again, that's at the Lexington Village Clubhouse. That's it.
All right, thank you. And what time, the July twenty-ninth, what time is that virtual?
Six o'clock.
All right, thank you. Anything from the clerk's office this evening?
Yes, I do. I just want to remind voters that early voting starts on Saturday, July seventh, and it goes through Sunday, August fourth. The hours are eight-thirty AM to four-thirty PM daily, except for Thursday, August first, when we have afternoon and evening hours from twelve PM to eight PM. The voting location for early voting is the Royal Oak Senior Community Center, and that is located at thirty-five-hundred Maris Avenue in Royal Oak. That is just east of Crooks and north of Thirteen Mile Road, literally five minutes up the street. Please remember that this is a primary election. Mayor Protemblis reminded everybody as well. You can only vote for one party on this ballot, even though there are two parties on the ballot. Stay in your lane. So if you're going to vote on the Democratic side, just vote on the Democratic side, and then continue on to the nonpartisan section. If you're going to vote on the Republican side, just vote on the Republican side, and then continue on to the nonpartisan section. If you vote for a party, both parties, that invalidates that portion of the ballot. If you realize that you did that on your absentee ballot, after hearing this right now, you can come to the clerk's office and you can spoil that ballot and revote it. If you'd like to receive an absentee ballot, those are still available. You can apply online. You can call our office, or you can come in, or you can go through the Secretary of State's office online and make that application. All, the election is Tuesday, August sixth. All voting locations will be open in the city from seven AM to eight PM. And if you would like to see the ballot before going to the precinct, you can locate those on our website. And then I'd also like to make a note about civility. Please also extend it to your election workers and your clerk's staff. We are just trying to do our job, and we appreciate your kindness. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Rorbeck?
No comments.
Councilman Fleming?
Yeah, I have a few items here. First of all, I want to talk about Oakland eighty, which is a great program for students and also people who have even graduated high school already and working. They do have a liaison here in Madison Heights that comes to the city hall, and they can help you with getting federal student loans and grants. And also, they help you with employers that also are partnering with Oakland eighty. And so they can get you job placement and, you know, and working in that kind of area there. I also want to say congratulations to all the players who participated in the Little League this summer. They did really well. I don't want to say my team. It was the players who actually won the game. And they could not do it without the support of their parents and all the volunteers who did such a great job supporting the baseball teams themselves. So if next year you have some time to volunteer, doing some volunteer work for the Little League baseball team is a great place. We're going to be having a cyber, student cybersecurity presentation at the, at the library the day of the election on August sixth from six-thirty to seven-thirty. It's a really important issue for me, myself, I think, and a lot of parents, too. You have a lot of cybersecurity issues where the topic will be making sure that your children are safe when they're online. This could apply to anybody, even regardless of what age you are, because there's a lot of people who are, you know, looking to human traffic your children, or also, you know, do heinous acts that are taking place online. On September the twenty-first, which is the date of Trail Tunes, the, we're going to be having the Second Annual K-9 Demonstration. It's going to be taking place at Rosie's Park. It's going to be a great time, and you'll be able to see what Harko, our police working dog, does for our city police. And it'll be really, really a great, great time right before the Trail Tunes kicks off. Also, I want to say congratulations. This last week, on July the sixteenth, was the Annual Police Department Awards. We do have a great, a great police department, and I want to thank all the officers for the high level of professionalism and work that they do daily. And finally, there's been a lot of recent events that have happened at Rosie's Park of vandalism, and that the police department has been stepping up, increased patrols of the park. And if you do observe something that's been going on, make sure that you do report it, so they can, you know, make sure that you report it, and they can check out the incident that occurred. So that's, that's all my report tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Soltis?
Thank you, Your Honor. So I want to thank the police chief. The other weekend, I went on a ride-along, and then also with the officer that took me. We went to Rosie's Park. There was something going on. I didn't walk the hill. I just stayed in the car. But, you know, they were, it wasn't as busy as usual, but it's, it's good to go ride-along and see what they have to go through. A lot of it was about welfare checks, knocking on doors and seeing that they're doing okay. So. But anyhow, I appreciate that they allowed me to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. So I just want to echo a couple of things. Thank you. So I just want to echo a couple of things. Yes, we had the police awards. We used to do them here as part of the council meeting, but we, we did them at the Police Department. And it was really very nice, because I feel when they come here, it's a little bit rushed. So this was great, because this was just some time dedicated to our officers and their families. So I want to thank everyone who was involved with that. With respect to Rosie's Park, we are aware that there are some issues that are going on there, and so it is being looked into. So we've got this virtual meeting coming up. So people who are concerned about that, please check in with that. And then with respect to waste pickup with priority waste, let us know. You know, if you're not getting through on their line, if your garbage, your compost, your recycling isn't being picked up, let us know. If we don't know about it, we can't follow up on it. So you can complain to your neighbors. You can complain on social media. You can do all those things. But if you actually want something to get done, reach out to us. You can reach out to the City Manager's office. You can reach out to me or anybody on council, and we will make sure that it gets forwarded to the right place. But if we don't know about it, we, we can't look into it to know about it. And that's really, that's it for this evening. Our next meeting is going to be on August 12th. This meeting is adjourned. Good night. It's 8:00.